Amy, you're ready. Our voters Jay Brady.
Yes.
She Broder.
Here.
She Holmder.
Yeah.
Es Blanshro.
Here.
Here Revere.
Present.
And Jay Brumman is present. Please join me in the class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do not have any adjustments to the agenda. We have a student press today. Most students are in court today. I have a motion for approval of the minutes of 11:13:17 and 11:20:17.
No move.
Second.
For today's. Questions, comments, ready to vote? All in favor? Vote. Command. We have justice go around. We have public input. I'll let you make your. And so we have a third board.
I'd like to introduce Heather Gage and Caitlin Davis from the H. P. Partners Ed. And I believe Caitlin's been talking about ACTA. And I was going to start with every student succeeds.
Yes, right now. Great. Perfect. Hello, everyone. How are you? Good to see you. Thank you so much for inviting us up here. We're really, we love coming up to school districts. Caitlin and I actually even love more coming up to the North Country. So it's a plus plus for us. We actually thought on the way up, we should have spent the night and we weren't that forward thinking, but next time we'll do that. So it's definitely a pleasure to be here. We know you have a full agenda tonight, but we did want to just take a little bit of time and go over a few different things. The first thing that we're going to talk about is just the Every Student Succeeds Act. I'm going to try and be as brief as possible with that, knowing that you might have some additional questions. And we could also provide you with some more information as you, as you feel like you need to for your own community's information. I do want to give you just a brief update on our statewide assessment system. That may also provide some answers to some questions that you may have. And then, of course, Caitlin is going to talk about adequacy. I want to try and leave as much time as possible for Caitlin. She's got a hook over there for me because I do tend to talk a lot. But so she's going to make sure that we provide most of our time for the adequacy part of that. Everybody should have, and if you don't, just call her at us and Caitlin will make sure you get one. But you should have a PowerPoint presentation. This presentation is a document that we provided in most places that we have gone to throughout the state. It has a lot more information in here than I'm going to actually talk about tonight. I'm going to glide through most of it. But the main thing that I want us to kind of have an understanding of is the difference in our accountability system at the state level previous to this year and what we're going to be doing and moving forward. So has everybody heard of the Every Student Succeeds Act? Should I start? Okay, so that is the act that replaced No Child Left Behind from 2001. But about 2013, the state applied for what they called a flexibility waiver for some of the accountability provisions within No Child Left Behind. We were able to receive that and we held that for about three years. Now, in 2015, believe it or not, it was that long ago, Congress passed the Every Student Succeeds Act, which replaced No Child Left Behind. It's still called the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of like 1967, I believe it was, way back then, but the new subtitle for it is the Every Student Succeeds Act. A lot of it is the same. There's, when we're talking about the focus of this federal piece of legislation, it's on making sure that we have equitable educational access and opportunities for those students that are struggling the most, that have the most challenges within our educational system. That does, that means low socioeconomic. It means just students who are struggling academically. It might mean our students with English learner backgrounds and so forth and so forth. We'll talk a little bit about what is in what we call our Consolidated State Plan. That's actually where I want to do most of our focus because we had a 100-page document that we submitted on September 18th that is just a reaction or answers to questions that the U.S. Department of Education asked us to submit, asked every state to submit, based on certain parameters within the new legislation. So it's called a Consolidated State Plan. Every state had to apply for it. We were in the second round on September 18th. That included about 35 states. The first round of states applied in April and all of those have been approved since then. So they have 120 days to get back to us, they being the U.S. Department of Education, about 120 days to get back to us on any questions or comments they have about our plan and that kind of thing. They've also already done a completeness check and we passed that already to make sure that we actually met the requirements of all of the questions that they asked us. So that was good. Now they're just going to give us their thoughts, opinions, you know, that kind of thing about how we can make it more clear. Because as you know, whenever you're writing something, you can, it's like writing a dissertation or any kind of paper, even an editorial for a newspaper, you're looking at it many, many times and it may make sense to you, but we need this plan to make sense for everybody in our state. So that's really important for us to go through that process. So let me just go through a little bit about just what the purpose of what, what we're going to be going through. So the Consolidated State Plan, if you get high level, the high level picture is the federal legislation, right? Then within that piece of federal legislation, the Secretary of Education has the opportunity to ask state-specific questions. Throughout the law, it says every state education agency or SEA must put into their state plan X, Y, and Z. That's throughout the thousand-page document of the law. However, the secretary also has the right to pick and choose out of all of those things what we actually have to submit to the U.S. Department of Education. So when Secretary DeVos took over in January, she reframed what that consolidated application was going to look like and submitted it back out to the SEAs, the state education agencies. It was, and it was much, much shorter. They asked very few questions, to be honest with you, about, in reference to, or in comparison to, I should say, all of the things that the law said we had to submit. We're okay with that because as New Hampshire culture will go, we don't really need them, you know, to, this doesn't sound right, but we don't need them, you know, monitoring us on everything. We have a certain way of doing things with local governments in our, in our state that we really, truly, truly value, right? But we also want to make sure that we have the best education possible for all of our students and great opportunities. So within this state plan, please know that it's not everything in the Every Student Succeeds Act, but most importantly, it's not everything by any stretch of the imagination. It's not everything that we're doing in education in New Hampshire. Okay? So as I go through this, just keep that in mind. The one thing that probably a third of the application talks about is our accountability system and how different that is. So with No Child Left Behind, we had maybe, I don't know if anybody can shout out some thoughts and then we'll open it up to the whole room here, but with, with the accountability system in No Child Left Behind, what were schools held accountable for? Two.
Test scores.
Test scores. Something else? There are two other things.
Attendance.
Attendance and?
Graduation rate.
My gosh, smart group here, China. Thank you. That's great. Yeah, so it's really those three things that fell into the accountability system, right? So what we, what I want to recognize in this new system is it recognizes a lot more, right, than just those, those kinds of things. I did, I think I mentioned this before, but at the end of this, I want to talk about the assessment system as well. So before we actually get into what's in there, just let me talk a little bit about the progress that we made through this. So as I mentioned, the ESSA law actually passed in 2015, in December 2015. We had basically a year and a half of transition, is what they call it at the federal level, to develop what our plan was going to look like. And the reason why they gave us so long to do that was so that we could really engage stakeholders. So you'll see on here, and again, I'm not going to read this to you, but you'll see on here that we had several update meetings with different organizations that represent educators and parents and so forth. We had stakeholder advisory teams meeting on certain sections of the Consolidated State Plan. We had a listening tour around, we had one in Gorham for the North Country and others around the state. We also did a survey. We were really excited about the survey. We had over 900 people respond to the survey, which in our world is unheard of to get that many responses. So we were excited about that. All of that information and all the work that was done in all of those areas, as well as the summary of the survey and the listening tour are all on our website for the New Hampshire Department of Education. Just look under the Every Student Succeeds Act and you'll find all of our stakeholder engagement efforts there. So as I mentioned, we submitted the plan on September 18th. So the plan, let's just start with the accountability plan. So like I mentioned, about a third of the application is just focused on those accountability requirements and it includes five areas. We had to identify state goals. We had to expand, we had to identify our expanded indicators. So it's not just proficiency, graduation rates, and attendance, although you'll still see proficiency and graduation rates in there. There's more than just that now, which was a really great validation that Congress heard our, our need to do that. We also have summative determinations for all schools, how we did on each of those indicators, as well as a summative determination there. And then we also use this process to identify what you may now know as priority and focus schools or back in No Child Left Behind, needs improvement, corrective action, restructuring, all those titles that we used to put on to schools that were struggling the most. And then we also have what we've always had is an integrated reporting structure where we have to make sure that we're getting information out to schools, to districts, to the community, to school board members and so forth. So let's just dig down a little bit further. So as you remember, No Child Left Behind required 100% proficiency by 2014. Under ESSA, the long-term goals and measures for interim progress in each of these areas, and we'll expand those out even more, are actually set by the state. So instead of the Fed saying you need to be 100% by a certain date, we say we're going to set reasonable but ambitious, and we had to get our psychometricians engaged in that conversation to do some comparisons across the state as, as well as making sure that they're ambitious across the country for each of these areas. And we'll go into a little bit more detail on, on that as well. So the indicators, excuse me, as I mentioned, are going to help us identify instead of, because we love to change our acronyms, instead of focus schools, when you think priority schools, those are lowest performing schools in the state, there, those are going to be called our comprehensive support and improvement schools, or CSI. Then we also have targeted support and improvement, which is those school districts, maybe not the lowest performing, but they have the greatest achievement gaps in their subgroups so that we can really help focus in on what's going on there. That's our former focus school, will be TSI schools. However, even with that, that we're using the accountability system to help us identify our most struggling schools and the most struggling subgroups, the indicators will also be reported for every school. So right now, this region, I don't believe, has any priority and focus schools. You may not, when we do our new system, have any comprehensive support or targeted support schools either. But even with that, you'll still have the information about every indicator as well as a summative determination as well of how you're doing. Okay? So this is the graphic that it will focus on and then I'm going to try and just see if there's any questions. So we have that overall determination, but that's made from four areas and two of those areas have subgroup areas based on whether it's K, our elementary and middle schools or our secondary schools, our high schools. Okay? So the first one is that typical proficiency, something we're very much used to, 3 through 8, high school, math, and ELA. We try, many states tried to actually put other content areas into that, but the law is very clear. Congress went back and forth with it, but they still determined it has to only be on math and ELA. We could have, and maybe at some point we will, but the determination was made through this stakeholder engagement effort, but right now, we won't do it. We'll build our system as we go, but we could have put like science or social studies in one of the other indicators, but as of right now, we didn't do that. That first box is only proficiency. Okay? So that's very typical to what we see right now. That second box, another academic indicator, actually is more than that. For the high school, it's very similar. It's graduation rate, right? We will be reporting out the four and five-year graduation rate, but for accountability purposes, we will be using that four-year. So for the growth for elementary and middle school, the one thing we heard so much about when we were doing this process, as well as even before that, when we, back in 2002, when we first started doing that, is we, we dis- incentivize, if that's even a word, we do not incentivize the work of growth. So you could have a school that, that they're, because of the way No Child Left Behind was, that said, or that their proficiency rate in one year was, let's say, 29% proficient in mathematics, right? And they went from 29 to 42, but the system was set up where they had to go to 45. So they would be called a failing school even though they may help their kids grow that much. That's significant. And we really need to help focus on that area and, and respond to it, recognize it, and use some best practices with it. So we now have it in our system. And even, and especially with identifying schools for CSI or TSI, that's a greater weight than proficiency alone. So that's a big, big, bold move for what we're doing here. Graduation rate is still in there. We also have progress towards English language proficiency. You'll remember AMAOs is what we used to call them, annual measurable objectives, that it used to be in Title III, which is where our English learner section is. Do we have a high percentage of English learners? Okay, so I'll just, I won't spend too much time on this, but it moved from Title III, the accountability piece, moved from Title III to Title I. So if you don't have a large pool of those students that is weighted so that it's fair for all schools concerned. And then we have this other indicator, at least one additional indicator, is school quality or student success. And basically what we've done here, you'll see the equity for elementary and middle school. So what did we do with No Child Left Behind when it came to four levels of proficiency? We tended to, it pushed back on me if you don't agree, but we tended to focus on the middle, right? Of moving those twos to threes. That's where we focused, right? I don't know if anybody would disagree with me on that. What this does is it also gives you credit for moving your ones to twos. Okay? That, again, significant that we're recognizing growth is really important. So it helps with that. And then this other one for high school, career and college readiness. This is probably the one that I'm most excited about. Let me tell you why. Because when you look at these 10 indicators here, most of our schools in our state, most of our high schools, our, their students are participating in at least two of these areas that you see listed here. We need to give you credit for that. We need to give you credit for pushing your students to be actively engaged in these higher order, higher level work practices, including CTE, career pathways, armed forces, all of those kinds of things. Now, what we need to do on our side is put a little bit more definition behind this. So what do we mean by completion of a New Hampshire career pathway? What do we mean by earning a CTE industry-recognized credential so that everybody knows exactly what it means across the board, right? Because there could be a little bit of different definitions everywhere. So we need to be a little bit more clear, but what this says is any, for any graduating senior that has completed successfully, any two of these, your school district gets points if you want for that. It's an incentive kind of program. So you'll recognize within this that there's a lot of incentive in this accountability system where we really didn't have that before. So we're pretty excited about that. That's our accountability system. You'll notice, and I'm not going to go through much more of this, but you'll notice further on down, you'll see that we have support for schools that we had to put in this plan. We talk about equal access or equitable access to educators, school conditions. We're doing a lot of work with the Department of Education around student wellness, around anti-bullying, those kinds of things. And also, we're really getting into that work of school transitions, which you guys have been doing for a really long time. We still have migrant education, interventions for students that are neglected, delinquent, and at risk. We also have our support educators in our Title II programming. We have a few recommendations in there. And again, the helping students who are English learners. We have a new competitive program. Did you guys apply for the robotics fund here? Do we know? Okay. So there's, there was a competitive grant out for robotics, but there's another grant that's coming out late December, probably early January, that has to do with Title IVA and it really, you can use it for almost anything to improve education in your school. So be looking for that. We still have our after-school programs, funds for rural income school programs and our homeless. And so all of that is in our plan. That plan is posted on our website and I just wanted to make sure that you had kind of an idea of what that accountability, that new accountability system is going to entail. And then before, before I ask if there's any questions, I do want to let you know that we do have a new assessment system in our state and I'm really happy to report it's not a lot different than what you saw before with Smarter Balance, except the question bank is different and will really be focused on New Hampshire educators helping to develop that after this first year implementation is trying the new system. But when educators go on, it's called the statewide assessment system, or SAS, is what we're calling it. When educators go on, it's that same looking portal. Has anyone in the room been on the portal yet? Yeah? So, so it's a very, very similar to what they've experienced in the past. So we don't have that implementation or learning curve that we had when we went from LECAP to Smarter Balance. So this is, it is a different assessment, but the portal, the, where students and educators go, the system looks very, very similar. So that's really good. We don't have to worry about that learning curve. We're still doing SAT for grade 11. That's still in, in there. Do we have any special education educators or folks that work in that area? So we started doing dynamic learning maps a few years ago. We're continuing to do that, but the good news is we've added science. So it's very familiar, but instead of doing the portfolios for science, we're now using the dynamic learning map. So that's really good. Again, we're doing WIDA and our pace waiver continues. We received approval for another year. And there's a bill that passed in the last session around HB 166. Has that been a conversation here too much? Let me just tell you really quick what that's about. The state legislature passed a bill that would allow school districts to only do assessments. The state wants assessment, wants an elementary, wants a middle, and wants a high school. Don't have to worry about the high school because middle do it once in high school anyway. That actually conflicts with federal legislation where we get our title funds. So what we're doing at the state level is trying to work with the U.S. Department of Education to find a solution where there won't be that conflict. So we're working on that. We're looking for advice on that. We do have it posted on our website, right on the front page. Just look for assessment waiver on there. Right now, we just ask the school districts, continue to do what they're doing, move forward, don't change anything. We'll let you know if we get a waiver from the U.S. Department of Education on that. Does anybody have any questions about any of that? I'm sorry, that was so fast. Interesting information, right?
One concern, when we use graduation rate as one of our indicators, it's really, really easy to dummy down graduation rate by giving them simple, simplified coursework, et cetera, and saying, okay, we can bring the graduation rate up really quick, really quick. And I get, I get nervous when I hear of that as a indicator because we're, we're doing it for the wrong reason. We want to bring the graduation rate up so that there's more students who are college and career-ready.
Yes. I couldn't agree with you more.
We don't want to just bring it up so that our number looks good, so that we get more funding or that we look better in the state newspaper or whatever.
Right.
So I worry about graduation rate as an indicator.
So just one little, small comment on that. So why we don't have to worry about you getting more money for it. Unfortunately, there isn't more money for that unless you go below 67% and then you might be identified as a comprehensive school improvement, school. So that is a possibility. But that is one of, I think, I find so much value in that comment because that's one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure we had that indicator that listed all of those areas of, that students could take to ensure that they have opportunities to show their mastery in college and career readiness.
And is it a comprehensive rate or is it just a yearly rate? In other words, when they enter as freshmen to when they finish four years later?
Yes.
Or is it year to year to year to year?
It's a cohort.
So it's comprehensive? So if you had 100 students enter as freshmen?
Correct.
And 85 finished four years later, then you have an 85%. As long as you're taking out people that move.
Oh, yes, yes, all of that's done, right.
But we simplified it.
Yep.
We started with 100 and there's only 85 when they graduate. That's an 85% graduation.
And we will also report out your, your five-year graduation rate as well.
Okay.
Yep. Absolutely. Any other freshmen come in? All right, I will turn it over to Caitlin.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, so does everybody have a side with a sheet from the [inaudible]? Does anyone need it? Everybody can hear me too? So things, one, remind me to speak up and two, tell me to slow down because speaking too fast could, they tend to do both of those things. So it's kind of like, you're making hand motions at me. It's, you can't hear me or it's going way too fast. So I want to talk to you a little today about education funding that comes from the state. There's a variety of different funding sources that come from the state. They have, some of it's the federal money that flows from the federal Department of Education to the state of New Hampshire, redistributed to school districts. That's all, mostly what Heather was just talking about, the Every Student Succeeds Act money. We have other state funds, state special education funding, building aid. Those are all things that come from the state general fund. We have U.S. Department of Agriculture money that comes to school districts. That's to provide free and reduced lunch meals. And then on top of that, the biggest and most notable line item in the entire state budget, not the, not the Department of Education budget, is something that we call adequate education grants. So adequate education grants are money that come from the state in this thing that we call the Education Trust Fund to towns and cities to provide what we call an adequate education to students. So the history of this funding, back in the late 70s, a guy named Wendell Jessman actually sued the state. Well, he originally started trying to sue the federal government, saying that the tax structure in New Hampshire didn't allow for specific towns to be able to provide enough funding to provide what he called an adequate education to students. Originally, he tried to sue the federal government, but there had been previous cases where other states had started to sue the federal government for additional funds and they said, no, it's not the federal government's responsibility. However, depending on what it says in your state constitution, it may actually be a responsibility of the state. They went back with the state's constitution and sure enough, the state constitution actually does talk about giving an adequate education, providing adequate, providing an education to citizens. So this was the late 70s. So over the next almost 30 years, there are a whole variety of lawsuits that kept, that went in place. In 1983, the first large lawsuit was filed and it was mitigated by bringing this guy named John Obinlo to the state. He's nationally known as somebody who is the grandfather of education funding formulas. So he went to all of the different states across the country and helped them determine how much money state should be providing to schools to provide an adequate education. So there was a formula that he developed for the state in New Hampshire. The legislature reviewed that formula and then funded about, I think, 11% of the total amount that they were supposed to fund. So, so then different iterations of the formula. There was, it was called domination funding and there were all these different changes that were in the formula over the next couple of years, up until 1993, where we had something that was called the Claremont lawsuit. So essentially, we had a state formula that they said, this is how much you need to provide to have an adequate education, but that money was never really provided directly to the districts to the point that the school districts all got together, all, all five large school districts got together and sued the state. So again, over the next almost 20 years, other school districts began to sue because there were, while there were all these lawsuits and there were seven lawsuits, the state never really actually provided all of the funding that they were supposed to provide as a result of these lawsuits. So moved forward into 2007, it was known as the London Mary lawsuit and that was the largest, most recent lawsuit that ended up with a formula that looks a lot like the formula that you have, that we have today that's in front of us. So with that, that lawsuit did a couple of things. So it said that the state legislature must define what an adequate education is, cost out what an adequate education is, provide money for that adequate education by a certain time. So those, all those specific details ended up with this law, this formula that we have right now. So all of the other lawsuits, they mainly said, yeah, you need to provide funding, but they never really defined what an adequate education or adequate funding was or they never said you needed to do it by a certain time. So finally, all of the pieces came together to have this formula that went into place in 2008, 2009. So this formula, the way it works is it's state funds that flow just to town, to school districts, so the check is cut to school districts, but it's based on the populations of resident students in towns and cities. So we calculate it by towns and cities, and they look at the number of students that you had in the towns and cities, and we multiply it by some various different factors to get an amount of education funding. So one thing I just want to point off the top, point off the top, does anybody know what the difference between ADM and enrollment are?
Average daily membership?
Yep, ADM is average daily membership, and then enrollment. Do you know what the difference is of the two of them?
Quite, go ahead.
So enrollment is a point in time. So at any given time, there might be 20 people in this room, so that would be the enrollment for that day. But if you were to leave, um, for this, for the enrollment, that would be 19. So that would be enrollment. But the ADM would take into account that she was here for part of the meeting. So if she, our ADM for the room might be 19.8. So ADM is for the entire year. That's not my meeting. So that, that's kind of, I just want to point that out because a lot of people try to track back through this, and they say, well, I see that I had my enrollment, because everybody knows what their enrollment is, was this, but I only got paid for this other number. What's the difference? It accounts for changes in the population. Similarly, if a kid were to go to Berlin for half the year, and Whitefield for half the year, there would be, White Mountain, there would be a difference. So Berlin wouldn't get half that kid, and White, White Mountain would get half that kid, the funding for that. So the formula is based on ADMs, average daily memberships. And there's two different terms, ADMR, average daily membership in residence, so that's how we're calculating it, average daily membership in ADMA, average daily membership in attendance, that's the school district that the child is attending. So the formula put into place, what the legislature did was they looked at all of the containers that they got that they thought of that it was, that were required to provide adequate education, and they defined all of those. So they said, well, you must have a building, you must have a teacher for every 30 students, you must have a technology specialist for every 1,200 students, you must have a janitor. These are kind of, just making it very vague. But they went through all these things, and they said, all right, here's all of the costs, divided by 30 students equals $3,450 per student that you should be provide, be able to provide, we're going to call an adequate education. So that was in 2008, so $3,450 per kid. Now, one thing kind of right off the bat that I like to, to kind of point out, because people seem to know about this. So the original study said it was actually $3,456 per kid. Nobody knows how that extra $6 went. But across the state, it adds up to be several million dollars, so it's quite, it is quite a large amount. So, so that $3,450. So then what the state said is then we'll take that $3,450 per kid and then multiply it by the number of ADMs you have to come up with base net costs. So there's these different factors in the formula. So that $3,450, every two years, is adjusted by the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. Now, the way that is in law is the Consumer Price Index average of the last three years less health insurance costs. So it's a low CPI. So the last two years, so it was 1.8% from 2016 to 2016, and then from 2017 to 2018, it was a whole 2% adjustment. So, so from 2008 to 2018, 2019, you can see here on your, on your paper, that that $3,450 has actually become 36.36. So you can see right here, since the 17th and the 18th amount, so you can see that there was an adjustment right there. So the adjustment is done every two years with the state budget. And that's completely in law. That's exactly how the law reads to do it that way, so that's how we go through it. So in front of you here, I'm going to kind of talk to the piece of paper now. So we'll go over the calculation. So the calculation says, all right, $3,450 tax note is equals what we call your base date. And now then the state has then applied and said, all right, well, we know that different kids with different needs may cost more to educate, so we will, as the state, provide you with additional funds for those kids. So a child that comes from a free and reduced lunch household family, he said, well, you will likely need some more resources for that child, so we will give you more money. But just want to point out, this is not necessarily money that you're receiving to provide free and reduced lunch meals. There's federal money that's available for that, and state money. But this is, this just says, if you are eligible, then we will give you a little bit more money to educate that kid. Same with the LL, English Language Learner. So we say, well, if you are eligible for English Language Learner services, that probably costs the, the town or city a little, a little bit more money, so we'll give you a little bit more money for that kid. That's the $711 sped eligible. So if the kid is eligible for special education services, then you give a little bit more money. And third grade reading. So the one time in a child's career, if they test not proficient in reading in the third grade, then they get additional $711 for that child. These amounts are all multiplied by the eligible number of kids and the ADM. So that's kind of how we go through it. So we go through, we say, $3,450 times your ADM equals base date, then your A for free and reduced lunch, English Language Learner, Special Education, third grade reading. And then we come up with something that's called the Cost of an Adequate Education. So that's how it said, in law, we have, this is the, the adequate education, this is what is required, and then this is the amount that we're going to pay you to provide that adequate education. That's what that is, that cost of an adequate education. But it's never as easy as it looks or sounds. So there is a formula to come up with the amount of money that the school districts actually get. So there's something called SWEPT. It's the statewide education property tax. I think to most people who are property owners, they look at their property tax bill, and if you can kind of stomach looking at it, I can't look at mine because it's depressing. But you have a local education property tax, you have a state education property tax, county taxes, and other local taxes, is usually the terms. But it, that statewide education property tax is helping fund this, these education grants. So the way it works is the statewide education property tax is something that is collected locally and kept locally. This is an important point because people often say, oh, why, you know, the cost of an adequate education, I can see was $100,000, but the state only gave you a check for $50,000 was the difference. So what we are doing is we are netting the amount that you are supposed to collect in your statewide education property tax against the amount that we owe you for the cost of an adequate education. That make sense? Yes, but, yes, that's a good answer. So that is exact, so that, there's always a lot of confusion. And one thing I just want to point out about this too, because sometimes there's some myths about education funding. This, how many people have heard of the word donor town?
I have one.
In theory, you were one, but you were actually not. So there is actually no such thing as a donor town in this state because if your town collects more than an adequate, if you're the cost of an adequate education alone through your statewide education property tax, so if, if you, we owe you, or if the cost of an adequate education is $100,000, but you're actually collecting $200,000, you don't have to give us back that extra $100,000. So that extra $100,000 is not coming back into the state conference and then being, then being doled out in the formula.
Let me correct that. We used to be. We used to be a donor town.
The state did try to do donor towns, and it didn't work. It just, it was something that, people didn't ever make their extra money back. It just, it wasn't something that worked. Hey, every single year in the legislature, there is a bill to kind of reinforce that, to get that extra money, I think across the entire state, and it's been around for 30 to 40 thou, or 30 to 40 million dollars a year of excess revenue that they're keeping through the statewide education property tax. But as of right now, the state has been unsuccessful in passing any sort of bill and collecting that money back. So we, there are no donor towns. People are always confused. I actually get a lot of people that come in, and I'm very upset because my town's a donor town, and we're not getting anything for money, and I have to kind of explain that to them. They don't like this, so.
That's a good acronym, though. SWEPT. We don't get any.
Never thought about it like that. So to go back to the question, so we have the cost of an adequate education that we just talked about, less any statewide education property tax that you collected. And then we have something that we call the preliminary, preliminary adequate education grant. So again, it's never straightforward and as easy as we would think it would be, but in theory, that should be the amount that you're getting from the state in, as a, in a check. Now we have something called the stabilization grant. So who's part of the stabilization grant? So this is something that is very, very much a hot-button topic right now. So the stabilization grant is something that was put into the formula in 2012. So if we looked back, if this, if I made this sheet of paper in 2012, in addition to these five boxes that we have up here that kind of, that, that go up the student amounts, or the five student amounts, there would have been, well, one of them would have been very different, and there would be an additional one that's on here. So the free and reduced lunch category, that actually used to be a weighted formula. So if you had a higher percentage of free and reduced lunch kids, then you got a higher amount. So right now, for every one eligible kid, you get the 1818. But, but previously, if you were, say, like, 30% free and reduced lunch kid, you actually might be eligible for more than that. And there were four different weighting factors, up until if you were over a certain percentage, then you got that amount for every single kid in your entire school, regardless of if they were an eligible kid or not. So that was something that, I'm not sure the exact percentage, but, so that, that's something that was removed from the formula. And they said, all right, what we're going to do is say, we're going to give every single town and district the same amount for every single eligible kid that you have. So they, they took that out of the formula. And then there would have been another box, and it was, it was a mouthful, but it was called fiscal capacity disparity aid. So the way that fiscal capacity disparity aid worked was it looked at your town's median family income and your equalized valuation, essentially the property that you can tax in your town. And it, it added them together, and then it writes everybody into OFF titles. And the lowest two OFF titles brought an additional $2,000 for every kid, and then an additional $1,000, or $1,250 per kid. So a decent amount more for those towns that had really low family incomes and had really low property tax values. So the legislature in 2011, they went in the formula, and they said, we're going to change the formula for 2012. And we're going to say, all right, here, the, the special amount is this, oh, sorry, the free and reduced lunch amount is the same for everybody, and there's no more fiscal capacity disparity aid. So this, they eliminated those amounts. And they said, all right, now rerun the new formula. And we reran the new formula, and they looked at it and said, in a single year, you are going to remove $160 million from schools across the state. That doesn't seem like a good idea. And the legislature agreed, and they said, all right, well, we're going to come up with something which we're going to call the stabilization grant. And the way the stabilization grant was determined was it looked at, they said, all right, run the formula under the 2011 methodology, run the new formula, and whatever the difference is, that becomes your stabilization grant. So it was a one-time thing, whatever the difference was between the 2012, the new formula, and the old formula, is your grant. And now the way it was written in law is that there was no provision to change that grant amount, though it didn't then go look at the 2013 and 2011. It's still always that, that $10 became $10 going forward. There was, if a town became really, really rich, there was no way to reduce their grant. I simulate if a town became really, really poor, and so there was no, no way to give them more money for the stabilization grant. So that stabilization grant, which was put into place in 2012, was exactly the same from 2012 into 2016. Now, 2015 is actually when there was a change that was made. So in the state legislature, they had a two-year budgets, and in 2015, they were on budget for '16 and '17, so they were always working, you know, the next two years. So in 2015, the legislative session that was working on the budget, we want to do is we want to start adding a provision to change that stabilization grant. For whatever reason, that was not the original intent of the law, or we do want to kind of reduce it over time. So they decided to start doing that. They originally started running formulas that they were reducing it by 40% all-in-one shots, so it would have been huge amounts of money. They ended up settling on a 4% reduction of the original stabilization grant each year for the next 25 years, until it works down to zero. So they said, that is what we're going to put in law, and they put it in law in 2015. They said, we'll give you one year to adjust, so we made no changes in 2016. So 2017 was the first year of the reduction. 2018, the year that we're in right now, is the second year of the reduction, so the stabiliz, stabilization grant reduction. I mean, if you think about the way that works, it's a stabilization grant, so what did I say it was made of? It was made up of towns that had really low equalized valuation and had really high free and reduced lunch rates. So those were probably poorer towns already, they were kind of, getting this grant, and now those are the ones that are getting a reduction in their age because of that. So, so back to the cost of an adequate education, to the cost of an adequate education, less the statewide education property tax equals the preliminary grant. And now the preliminary grant plus your stabilization grant equals what we call the total education grant. So that's the amount that you are receiving as a check from the state of New Hampshire. That check is distributed four times a year, once on September 1st, once on November 1st, once on January 1st, and once on April 1st. So, and those amounts, so the Department of Education, every single year publishes on October 1st what the finalized amount is going to be for your adequate education grants going forward. And now, remember, I just said there's a September 1st payment, so they're often confused. In the previous year, we actually always do an estimate for the next year, so that can be used for town budget and purposes. So the first September 1st payment is based on that, that estimate that we did in the previous year, and then we'll true-up to say, all right, yeah, well, we did estimates, say you have 10 kids, you actually have 10 kids, we'll give you a little bit more money, and disperse it out in those, those other payments throughout the year. That is adequate education. That is the fastest I've ever gone through this. So do you have any questions or anything like that? Kind of talk you through it?
I want to address the elephant in the room. It strikes me that this whole process would be quite different if the amount of money that the legislature provided was $1.6 billion instead of $960 million. That number hasn't changed in 10 years. The cost of education has not remained the same in those 10 years. So this is an exercise to fit a size seven shoe on a size four foot, basically, if you follow the, follow the analogy. And it's great that you guys can figure this out, continue to wrinkle it and, and, you know, manipulate it and so on, but frankly, I don't, I don't get it. I don't, I don't get that we have local towns raising money that the legislature just doesn't have the nerve to raise themselves in the statewide education taxes. It's a property tax that you guys ought to be collecting somewhere, sales tax, income tax, I don't know, increase the gas tax, anything, you know? And, and it just seems like a losing proposition to be in education these days, to be a school board member and try to deal with, we're in a cooperative school district. So one town's misfortune in their tax property values affects everybody else's tax rate, and they did nothing to incur a $2.13 tax increase this year, except some of the town's misfortune in the district. How do you explain that to your voters? I mean, it puts us all in a very difficult position, and I don't see it getting any better. Am I wrong?
Honestly, every single time I do this presentation, somebody says that. And I mean, I-
Is it wrong? That's, that's-
So I like to put a little disclaimer on my presentation, and I usually say at the beginning, and I do it, that I work for the state of New Hampshire, I don't work for the legislature. I have no, well, why do you vote? No, and I have no influence on the formula, and I have to do what the law says.
Yeah.
So I mean-
Understood.
If I could give you millions of dollars per kid, I wouldn't do that. I mean, I can, I can only do what the law says. And that's what is really important, I think, that people take the time to understand this formula, they understand the different budgets, they understand how much it costs to educate a child in New Hampshire. The state average is almost $16,000 per kid. It ranges anywhere from $11,000 up to about $35,000 per district, though. It's important for people to understand that, and then make sure that their legislators understand that too, because those are the people that can make the decisions on that. I can just pay what the law says. No, 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 this comes up literally every single time.
She knows I sat on every single one of those advocacy hearings.
Could you vote 304 times for her?
We pass, I could just say quickly that-
We passed, I could just say quickly that she could tell you in the House, we passed every single adequacy bill that was there and finance squished them as soon as they got there. But we do have a new committee now that's meeting on Mondays for adequacy fund, did you go to that?
I was there today, you guys spent three hours today.
I was at the pony center, a child thing. But anyhow, so, I mean, we gotta see how it pays out, we've only had one year go into it. Obviously, basically, I represent eleven towns up here, because I go all the way up to Mile and everywhere. And with the kindergarten funding, it's basically gonna take care of the adequacy funding in the next year that comes up in a lot of our towns. The stabilization.
Good.
But that's only a one time thing, but I'm just, so we bought ourselves a year.
One year.
If we sell a lot of Kino tickets.
Correct.
Thank you for coming out.
Yeah, you gotta let people and understand the formula and you gotta have people that are willing to go out on a limb and enforce or even change this balance, because the four towns keep getting less, the rich towns keep getting more. It just comes down to voting in the legislature. And you can see the towns that got more over just by checking out who got what money when and what legislatures were there.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, Kayla, you did a fabulous job because I know, I've heard you speak twice and you explained it very, very well. Thank you. Thank you.
All the facts.
Yes.
You're an advocate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe drive.
Do you understand?
You gotta understand.
Too many things down.
Well.
What happens though?
Because if you end up raising more.
Yeah, you can tell you could.
Yeah, that's right.
You hurt yourself.
Yeah.
I have a calendar discussion, isn't it?
Calendar discussion, we didn't, we received a letter from Michael Kelly and I'm not sure if you discussed it, I missed that last meeting. So I think we should probably discuss that because we usually set our calendar in a certain, so I kinda need to get a schedule. Does anyone have?
I can't really read it.
Safe drop.
I think it's kind of, you know, we're gonna have a discussion obviously and we're trying to talk about calendars, you know, anyway, but I would like to respond to the letter dated October twenty fifth, two thousand and seventeen. To the board members, I'm writing to the president of the region three career and technical advisory board, in addition to the president's role as superintendent of schools for S E number twenty, and former principal of the S E number three. The president of the board for over ten years, my ten plus years report, discussion arising on an annual basis in reference to school calendar and S E thirty six, specifically the tradition for S E thirty six to begin school after Labor Day. Currently, S E thirty six is scaling school in the North Country that continues to begin the school year after Labor Day. Administrators in the North Country have worked diligently over the past ten years to coordinate calendars in order to maximize usage of the two career and technical centers. We have coordinated almost all days in the calendar so that the sending students will receive the most out of their educational experiences. Unfortunately, because of the S E thirty six calendar, sending students are not receiving the most from their programming at White Mountain Regional High School. An example, several years ago, S E thirty six calendar forced sending students to miss nineteen days of their career and technical programming. The calendar conflict of nineteen days represents eleven percent of the school year. As a sending district superintendent and former principal, I think it's extremely unfair to pay full tuition for only eighty nine percent of the service. I would suggest that if S E thirty six school board continues with the post Labor Day start, that you should prorate the tuition for actual days attended. Resources in the North Country are becoming increasingly scarce and it's imperative that all school districts work together closely to maximize the educational opportunity for all students, a positive step. And that direction would be that S E thirty six to begin school before Labor Day and align their calendar with all the other S E U's in the North Country. If you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact me. Contact information, Michael J. Kelly, superintendent of schools, S E fifty eight. And I do just wanna make this comment for we engage in a conversation that they're the ones that changed, we didn't. There, I don't believe is any active legislature right now, although we have all heard several months ago, Governor Sununu may mention that maybe a statewide proposal to start, you know, after Labor Day. But when we do go ahead to make our calendar, we'll have that conversation as well as we can talk about it now. But I would like to reply to, without courtesy, and I don't know what those numbers actually entail and if they're after it to say that our, you know, the sending students are losing eleven percent of the education. Why do, well, I mean, that.
That, that number is just a little bit distorted by one year, that was the year Groton actually started to go back to school two weeks before Labor Day because Labor Day was so late. And I remember I had a principal there and they come in here thinking, I've got the kind of long break before I have to start my new job. But that was a one year deal and one of the things we did do this year, like last week we did our inquiry institutes and we made an effort to include the C T receiving kid or sending kids into activity so they weren't missing the class. So like I did their precision exams with them and then did a comprehensive review of each individual sending kid so that there was meaning for them to be here. So I can't speak to two years ago because I wasn't here, but I know that we have taken steps. But this is, every time we have a region three meeting, the first agenda item is calendar and it's brought up every time. So Michael Kelly and a few of the principals over there discussed it and asked Mike to write it up.
I think it was a few years ago, I'm not sure who brought it up, but there was a question of when, when we started in the calendar, it was maybe, it was a difference of about ten days at the time, but there's specific, within specific programs, a test date and they didn't have the ability to take the test or, or there was some kind of problem there. Or it was like a hundred and ten days in or something, I couldn't remember exactly what it was, but.
That one year, they had seven days of school before we even started, so then we multiplied that by two because they're out seven days before us.
Right.
So it was fourteen days lost, just in, just in calendar.
Well, on both ends then.
Right, yeah.
You know, I mean, well, if the program in Littleton, is there, is there anything that anybody knows in the twenty year agreement that discusses the calendar?
George, you'd be an expert on this.
Well, in two thousand and six, when I became the assistant principal and vote director, Littleton was part of S E thirty five and everybody started after Labor Day. That's what I recall. And then when Littleton broke off and became S E eighty four, I was at the meeting when they decided to move in the other direction. And I, that was because the school board chair had a vacation home in Brunswick that he wanted to get to. That's exactly right.
Yeah, I believe you.
And it changed just like that. In fact, Forrest Goodwin, who was the vote director and in, in Littleton, and I was the vote director here, it was, we were still vocational education in those days. We used to put our calendar first in order to get all our funding in for our grant writing or whatever we were gonna put, put in for as far as Kyle Kirk, as much as we're gonna be getting. We'd work together on that and we would come up with a calendar that both school boards would adopt.
Well, I'm gonna simply say this, I'm interested only, I don't, I don't care when people have the vacation or where they have their homes. And not that I care, what I'm concerned with is the social implications and educational benefit to the children. That's the only thing I'm concerned with. What, what is the best calendar that benefits them? Because I think that's, that's what, you know, I think that's, you know, and in looking at the calendar, I think that's what we should be looking at.
Well, your C T students are obviously gonna benefit from starting at the same time as every other.
Well, I think that's, and I guess that, that, that's obvious.
Yeah.
But I mean, I, I know that districts, you know, across the nation have, you know, juggled this around over the years, you know, and, I mean, I've heard a variety of different reasons why, you know, it's been, it's basically been kept where it's at. You know, and they're not educational reasons, at least the things that, you know, have been, you know, related to me. So I guess what I'm interested in is either hearing or knowing, you know, if it's to be changed, you know, what are the, what are the benefits versus what are the negatives?
Robert, you and Mike are here, maybe you can kind of weigh in as to how you feel about this.
I've got the region three agreement in front of me. Number seven agreement states, the receiving districts and sending districts agree to develop mutually acceptable school calendars and class schedules annually, implement eligible students code access at all career and technical programs.
When they changed it, they didn't, you know, it goes both ways. I think one of the things too we have to take into consideration is if there is to have, you know, become legislature in the near future, it's, it's a moot point.
Within, within region three, was made up of Littleton and White Mountain Regional or Hugh Gallon and the Paradise Regional Vocational Center. Both kids, kids in both programs lose out.
Right.
Okay? Our kids are losing out, whatever, because Littleton's starting early and their kids are losing out because we're starting later. And that includes everybody, that includes all the sending schools from all over the place that are on.
You have to keep in mind that our district depends on tourism. And if we keep biting the hand that feeds us, we're gonna end up hurting.
Well, I know this has come up in the last probably three or four years.
Because when the calendar does come up, you're gonna have a crew come in.
Yeah. Local business owners and, yeah, of course.
Hopefully, the governor will take care of it.
Right. So I think at this point, I don't know, George.
Probably one thing, I'm, I'm ambivalent, I'm kind of leaning towards starting early. I'll tell you that right now. There should be a way, there should be a way to not penalize the kids if we stay in the program that we are right now, to, to, to provide some, some means for them to pick up credit and not lose the classes anymore. I don't know how to do that.
Yeah.
There should be a way, there should be some way to speak to those kids that are losing out.
Do we have a different calendar for the rest of the competition with C T?
Because C T kids take other classes as well. They don't use C T.
It would be a C D A issue.
Right, come on, next days.
Yeah. I guess my look at it is same as Dave, what's best for the students, because that's ultimately who we're here for. And to have two different starting dates is not best for the students, clearly. I do, you know, I do have some understanding about the tourism piece, but I would certainly lean towards having a common schedule myself. The only thing that I didn't like was the tone of that letter, it was threatening. And whatever we do for a response, I think it needs to be done in a professional manner, but I think it needs to be addressed how, quite frankly, unprofessional that letter was.
I totally agree.
You know, that's not gonna change, sway my, you know, my, my view of, or my view of should we be starting together or not? I think we should, but, you know, when he adds a threat to it, that's, that just doesn't sit very well.
Personally, I'd like to see what's out there in legislation. I'm not gonna go ahead and approve a calendar in December and then be in the wrong for the whole state.
Yeah.
Mike Gray was saying.
I don't think the letter's intent was to be threatening, I think it was more kind of, they hear from their districts, whether it's their school boards or their administrators. And so they're looking at us as representatives from S E thirty six at region three to come up with solutions or, or maybe, you know, you know, get a conversation going in our home district. So I think that was the intent of the letter and the spirit of it. I think if our school board responds to it, then it can potentially open up some dialogue and, all right, this is where we're at. All right, what are some solutions? And then as members of region three from S E thirty six, we think it potentially brings some ideas to accommodate them. The difficulty is when you're in the minority, which we are, and we're one of the other sending schools, you have Littleton and us, it does put us in a, in a bit of an awkward spot. And I know it's not one of the only reasons we lose enrollment, but that, that is one of, a number of reasons why we, we don't have so many enrollment of the kids that want to start, you know, seven, six, eleven, whatever it might be, any given year, days behind. And, you know, we're pretty flexible, that's something that S E thirty six has always been flexible to kind of make it kind of work, you know, like high school and other districts in, in my opinion, from my observation, they're flexible, but, you know, maybe not as flexible when it comes to working with us and, and so we can, we can, we can address that, you know, if you guys take a stance at the board and then we can go figure it out from there. So I just wanted to clarify the spirit and intent of the letter.
When I met with Sanders Village people and Ed Sampson around the Lancaster Fair, Lancaster Fair is really not an issue because we would excuse kids to attend their agricultural things that they do there. I mean, we're not gonna.
It's not legal.
Oh, no, we can, we can excuse kids if they're doing.
Especially on the yellow.
If they're doing their, their, no, just going to the fair, no, but if they're doing their animal things. And Sanders Village, they really, there wasn't a real lot of employees.
I mean, I know there's a couple.
It's decreased more, they're really pushing to hire retirees to, to avoid this and conflicts with athletics that are starting, are starting early in the year.
It's not necessarily the classroom, I just remember a couple of years ago, we had Chamber of Commerce and it's not just Sanders Village and it's, it's a lot of other businesses and inns and the hotels, you know, the season has been that season forever, we never changed ours. They're the ones that changed and didn't accommodate, make accommodations that maybe perhaps they were supposed to, to say, well, we're, we're making this change, maybe it was because someone wanted a vacation or something.
That's, that's what happened for that instance.
In that instance, but, you know, they didn't take into consideration that our students were gonna be starting after Labor Day and this has been a long going, I mean, conversation. But we did, we had several, we had Barron Brook Inn, we had other area, you know, Sanders It's just, you have those students that are working and, and they're providing, they get to the point where, okay, it's, they're gonna be starting school and they know that, but the rest of, you know, the tourists or whatever are still out there and they need services and these students are working, so it's, no, it's a lot to take into consideration. It's not simply a, you know, let's change it to accommodate the students of C T because it is the better thing for those students. So why would this happen?
That's a, I can tell you just from being in the heart of the White Mountains those weekends, Labor Day is bananas, it's just gotten bananas. And the number of visitors to the White Mountains is up fifteen percent each of the last three years. Now, that was six, it started at six million people, six million visitors. But if they're doing their animal things, um, J.C. And Santa's Village, there really, there wasn't a real lot of employees. I mean, I know there's a couple.
It's to create more, they're really pushing to hire retirees to, to avoid this and conflicts with athletics that are starting, that are starting early in the year.
It's not necessarily the classroom. I just remember a couple of years ago, we had Chamber of Commerce and it's not just Santa's Village and it's, it's a lot of other businesses and inns and the hotels. You know, the season has been that season forever. We never changed ours. They're the ones that changed and didn't accommodate, make accommodations that maybe perhaps they were supposed to, to say, well, we're, we're making this change. Maybe it was because someone wanted a vacation or something.
That's, that's what happened for that instance.
In that instance, but, you know, they didn't take into consideration that our students were going to be starting after Labor Day and this has been a long gone, I mean, conversation. But we did, we had several, we had Barron Brook Inn, we had other area, you know, Santa's Village. It's just, you have those students that are working and, and they're providing, they get to the point where, okay, it's, they're going to be starting school and they know that, but the rest of, you know, the tourists or whatever are still out there and they need services and these students are working. So it's, no, it's a lot to take into consideration. It's not simply a, you know, let's change it to accommodate the students of CTE because it is the better thing for those students. Why does this happen?
That's a, I can tell you just from being in the heart of the White Mountains, those weekends, Labor Day is bananas, it's just gotten bananas. And the number of visitors to the White Mountains is up 15% each of the last three years. Now, that was six, started at 6 million people, 6 million visitors. And it's up 15%. That's 90,000 each year additional people coming here. And man, for some, for what ungodly reason, they all want to come the same weekend. And it's that weekend and it's Columbus weekend. They get up here and they go, what are all these people doing up here? Why are you here? They're hiking, most of them. What are you here for? I don't know. Where's the Card Railway? You just drove by it. You missed it. Go back and catch it again, you know? But it's, those numbers just don't stop. I mean, the cities are growing and everybody wants to get the heck out of the city on the weekend. And yeah, tourism, I don't care whether it's, and people are coming up here asking us, where can we stay tonight? I said, oh, I don't know, East Hartford, Connecticut, maybe? No? It's tourist season, it's the big holiday, people are all here.
Well, it's probably worth mentioning too, that the majority of those tourists that do come, they've already started school. But then, you know, they're in school for two days and then they have five days off. It's, it's kind of productive in my opinion overall. I mean, I'm not going to change that, but maybe soon or well. So I don't know. I guess we just have to go along with, but my intent is to respond professionally to Mr. Kelly. And we will have this discussion again in December and we'll have a vote, see what happens. But I don't know if there's anybody out there I, that has any information on where it actually is in legislation because it was something that he addressed.
I was, I was hoping Troy was going to come back in.
Well, we did ask him and he really, there's no action right now, but it's, it's kind of...
He said it probably in January, but if it came about, we'd be, I want to move the calendar.
The whole state's moving that.
Back, just to reiterate what, what Peter said, back when we first moved here, 1978, well, nineteen seventy-nine, State Highway put a tape on Route Three. On Route 302, after the intersection where the only lights in the North Country are right there at Twid Mountain, measured the cars going east on 302 and going on. 1.8 million cars. You take a look at that number, came up Route Three, passed my house and made a right-hand turn. That's not counting the ones that kept going. You sit, sit right in my living room, you can see them all drive up here every Thursday night that starts and the Friday night it starts. And then they split, they either go up to Bretwood's that way or they go up 115, head north, all hauling their four-wheelers or they keep running, going straight.
Well, that's the other thing we have to take.
When was that?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
It was in seventy-nine?
Seventy-nine, yeah.
You can only guess what the number is now.
Well, the other thing we have to take into consideration, I'm from Massachusetts and every year, this is the way we came, we went to homework every year for Labor Day.
Yeah.
You know, and then we went home, we started school. We're not taking into consideration that tradition for our students and their families that that's their week, that's the last route, whether they stay here or they go south to lay in the sun or wherever they go. So there's a big portion of our...
The other issue is getting out of school late, getting out of school past June 20th, 22nd, 23rd, um, that, that's, that's not very good educationally. And that also plays into this, when we start after Labor Day, then we finish later. We start before Labor Day, we're going to get, finish more towards the middle of June. And I think that kind of plays into the discussion too.
I think, I would like just to make one final comment. I mean, I mean, I think, you know, once, once we have the calendar for us, you know, that'll be fine. But, um, when we talk about this, I, I guess the part that bothers me is, is that we all have our own passions. And, and I guess what I was trying to say is that I want to, I really want to look at this objectively as what is really going to work thus far. I mean, when I was in school years ago, we started after Labor Day, okay? Uh, and where I grew up, they start now before Labor Day. I mean, that said, and I honestly don't know why they moved it, okay? Uh, I know that there has been a trend to move it. I don't, I don't have any specific academic achievement reports as the, as the, you know, if that, if that's better or not. Uh, but, but I guess what I'm getting at is that, uh, I would like to look at this not in a passionate way, uh, that this is how I did it and we've always done it that way. But more objectively is what is really good for the kids and what is good for the district uh, in terms of providing them with the best possible education.
Well, it's important, I think, for us to see and look to the number of students that it actually is affecting firsthand within CTE to the rest of the students in the districts. Yeah? Include them all?
Well, I think that, I think numbers would be, you know, we actually have some actual numbers that might be very helpful too. I don't know if that's possible to do.
So we got, I'll write something up and just send it along on behalf of the board, if that's okay? I can send you what email to give me an okay on it when it's written, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anything else you can do to this? Um, I have a motion to go into non-public session according to RSA 91-A-3. Does it now?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, there is a non-public? Oh, I thought there was one, okay. So this one's not necessary? Okay, sorry. Take those moments back.
I rescind my motion.
Rescind it.
What did they do? Trying to stay in the moment. Okay. Do you have anything for Ed Programme?
No, I don't have the last eight right now.
Facilities?
I'm trying to remember.
Well, we have the minutes here.
The minutes are in the packet, I think.
Do you have a next meeting?
I've got a question, I, I've got a comment in the facilities report. Uh, I read the oil bid situation and like, I don't know if CN Brown's still the lowest. But around probably 13 months ago, when Littleton had not gone yet to get bids of oil, I ended up getting, doing that job as the director of Littleton Brown's. And I've got several bids and CN, and they were working, Littleton had always, had always done a pre-buy, so they had to pay upfront for everything. I don't know how we do it. But CN Brown came up, we gave them a pre-buy bid, but they allowed them to pay over time based on what they used. They had a, they had a contract for so many gallons and that's based on historical data that they...
Right.
But so that, that was a big difference, especially for Littleton because they're waiting for money from the town of Littleton to fill their coffers so they could make out that big payment as we do. Just, I thought, I know I have a lot of confidence in CN Brown and they were, they were fair when I worked with them, so. Just make that call, period.
Thank you. Personnel, full meeting, the Association of Sports Staff, next meeting is on the 30th of September.
We're going to meet before, or?
I know, we never did that one time.
Because we got a rebuttal to their...
Yeah. Yeah, so tomorrow, Wednesday, what's your plan?
I can't meet on Wednesday. Can't we meet just before the meeting? I mean, is it?
Yeah, I mean, Thursday, what?
We come in 15 minutes, half hour early?
I don't want to meet. What are you here, 2:30? 2:30, yeah.
That's fine.
2:30. 2:30 instead of 3:30. Sheila's hands out, okay, Sheila?
Yeah.
Thank you. Policy, we met tonight. And we have a few amendments, maybe a first read for the next meeting, December 11th. Pretty busy, so I'm not going to schedule one. So our next meeting will be the second prior to the next, December 2nd for the meeting. Thank you. Yeah. So on December 18th, we meet next. Safety, do we have anything, George, on safety?
Next meeting is January 5th, 2018.
2018. Strategic planning is not really out right now. We have anything from the athletic advisements, if anybody wants to put on that?
We're still meeting?
Yeah.
We're still in the middle of it?
When's your next meeting?
Typically, we meet every other week.
Okay. Sounds good. Now, unfinished business, new business. Are we ready for action agenda items? I have a motion for action agenda item one. Approve the budget hearing and deliberative session, meeting dates is ready? Peter, second?
Second.
Peter, from there. No, no conversation?
Do we have some dates?
Yeah.
We're in your package.
Budget hearing date for January 10th, 2018, snow date of January 11th, 2018, deliberative session February 5th, 2018, and snow date of February 7th, 2018. We all good with those dates?
I will not be here on January 10th.
Or 11th.
Or 11th.
I'm listening to the best part.
I'm sorry, so...
I'm sure I am. Well, hold on. And I'll be able to sign after the 15th.
The 10th of Jan, the 10th of January is also a struggle for me, as is the 11th.
Well, I'm looking at the state war on these states.
Yeah. As long as we have a one, we're going to be, budget's going to be coming on December 11th for presentation.
February dates, fine, it's just the 10th. And if we have to go, we have to go and don't, don't keep it on my board.
I mean, there's really no, we go around here, right? The January dates?
Not the January?
Kind of. That's two we know of, so still five more of us. At least four of us will make it, right?
6:30? I'm assuming 6:30?
Right, and I know David's going to be kind of...
That's a Wednesday, Thursday? That's the choices?
Well, it's the hearing and the, the snow date is the 10th and 11th.
The hearing is Wednesday, the 10th.
Yes.
So why couldn't it be the 8th and the 9th? Is there...
Maybe preferential, I'm not sure. I think our finance department...
Petition warrant articles are due, no, ours are due in January. The reason we do Wednesday now is so that our hearing is the day after the deadline for petition warrant articles so that if we get any in, we can include them.
So it's the 9th?
Because we'd have to have a second hearing if we happen to get a petition warrant.
Tuesday is the 9th, is the deadline?
I think that's, I think that's the deadline, Peter, I don't have it planned.
I knew there was a reason, rhyme and reason for everything here.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the votes? All those in favor? Action agenda item two, I have a motion to approve the following volunteer coaches from White Mountain Regional High School into sports, but finds wrestling, Chad Tarter, Nordic skiing, Brian Beebe, Nordic skiing, Ken Mayer, unified basketball.
Two.
Wait a second?
Second.
Peter and George, in discussion, are we ready to vote? All of them favor? Opposed?
Scott's coming in.
He's going to want to vote himself.
You're going to say?
I am obscene.
You're not getting paid so completely.
Okay. Now. Public input, anybody? Really, you have anything for us tonight?
Not tonight, I'm good for it.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into non-public. Um, I don't know how long it'll be, the internet will come out of non-public and... But I have a motion to go into non-public, what are you, are saying 91-A-3?
So moved.
David, Peter? No hearing? Okay, everything? All those in favor?
I have all come.
Hi, Rogers? Jay Brady?
Yes.
Chief Broder?
Eric.
Steve Momenter?
Yes.
Des Lanezro?
Yes.
J. Ryan? Yes. We're going to stay here as long as that's...